Hello.
Hi there.
Like everyone is here. Sarah, do you want to kick off our work session?
Yes, I want to welcome everybody to this work session talking about residential development in the unincorporated area. And I'd like, I can go ahead and introduce some of these folks you already know, but for folks that may be listening at home that might not know. I want to introduce Tanya Voight, who is our zoning manager, and then Jeff Crick with Lawrence Douglas County Planning Organization. And then Mary Miller, who you guys do know from her presentation as a planner with Lawrence Douglas County Planning. So I think I'm turning this over to Tanya. Oh, before I turn it over to Tanya, I want to say, these work sessions are for informational purposes only and to provide background and education for the commission. No action will be taken at the meeting today. If there is action that would come out of it, it would come back before the commission on a future agenda. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Tanya. Looks like Tanya is sharing her screen with us.
Okay. Hi, guys. I'm Tanya Voight, the zoning director here at Douglas County. And today's meeting really is just informational. Staff has identified just some issues with development inside of the urban growth area. And that is mostly in relationship to just unincorporated county type development. Those are residential development parcels that we're talking about. Jeff's going to kick off the meeting by providing some information about the city of Lawrence and the goals for Lawrence and how that fits with Douglas County, with some information about population, and then we'll roll into several other factors about development in the urban growth area.
Good afternoon, everybody. I hope my audio is okay, I hope. Excellent. Thank you all. It was great to see everybody. I wish we were, that's always, I've always appreciate having the in-person meetings, but Zoom is nice too. As Tanya said, we just kind of introduced a little bit about kind of what's been going on kind of over time with population and growth. The chart you can see on the screen here is really a culmination of the population changes that we've seen over time. Excuse me. And as you can see there, it really started in the county and in the city of Lawrence and also our other municipalities. Baldwin, Udonora, McCompton really started to take off right about 1950. So right after World War II, we started to see kind of an upkick in the population area there. The numbers you can see at the top of the bar there is the total population for the county, including all the municipalities. So as a total in the 2010 census was 111,000 people that lived in Douglas County. One I did want to share is about this time every year, we'd be getting the newest information available because of some issues with the Census Bureau and the pandemic, that information should be out at the end of March. So we're hoping to have some information there. One thing we do when we look at Plan 2040 was we tried to take the numbers apart and understand a little bit about what's going on, where and what those changes are. And the line that you can see here is just the, when we dissected those numbers, this is the population of Douglas County that is in the unincorporated area since 1910. And so you can see that it did go through a bit of a dip in the 1960s and 1970s, but kind of started coming back up around the 1970s. So to kind of give you an idea of what that is, that's, it's been a pretty stable number from about 1990 going on, as you can kind of see in that pattern there. Thank you. And then to kind of give you a perspective of what it is there, when we researched during the comprehensive plan, this was also some of the information we saw in Horizon 2020 back in the 90s was the real driver of the overall population for Douglas County tended to be in the urban areas and specifically in the city of Lawrence. On average, since about 1970, Lawrence's population is comprised somewhere between 78 to 80% of the total population of Douglas County. So it's always been kind of a big hub and big driver to that one. You will note though, the city of Lawrence has not done any significant annexations in quite a few years. So the city limit line of Lawrence has stayed relatively stable with a few additions here or there. But the population has continued to grow within the boundaries of itself right now. The office, planning office, every year does an estimate for the city of Lawrence, trying to figure out what that is. And our latest estimate was about 103,000 people live inside the city of Lawrence. Thank you. And this slide just kind of shows you the population for the three smaller municipalities. We didn't put it on with the Lawrence one because of the way the graph would work, these would have been compressed towards the bottom and it'd be hard to read the numbers and differentials. So we gave them their own slide to give them, so you can kind of see that fluctuation. But as you can see there, really Baldwin and Udonora has seen very similar urbanization numbers, kind of in that same trend. So right around 1950, they started to pick up and move in that pattern. And just a couple of things to note that we always talk about, I feel I need to mention it too, is the city of Lawrence and what we do in the planning offices, we look at a lot of different factors and numbers to understand what is going on. So we do residential lot inventories, we do multi-dwelling inventory report, which is a study of our multifamily zoning districts in the city of Lawrence to understand how much land is zoned, what the development potential and capacity is of that land and try to understand what those are. All of those items factor into the way that we look at the urban growth area and tier two in Plan 2040. That kind of helped establish what we would think to be the growth baseline based upon some factors in the population. And then we used other factors to kind of curtail and establish that line, mainly looking at fire medical response rates, the ability to serve water and sewer to the areas and other Lawrence level municipality services. So that was kind of how tier two's line came to be and found there. So just a quick overview of the I am certainly be on the calls. If you have any questions, be happy to answer those. And Tanya, I'll turn it over to you, I believe.
Thank you. So this parcel data is some information that we gave when we just recently went through new zoning regulation changes. Those were adopted in February of 2020. Most of 2019, we were working with the public and traveling around the county to discuss new land use regulations for Douglas County. Prior to that, the regulations were originally from 1966. And they had had some modifications and amendments and those type of things, but really had never been looked at holistically and really brought up to current times. So as you can see with our parcel data, we have some data from 1992 that really talks about the land use for Douglas County. In 1992, a little over 40% of the county was agricultural only. About 38% was agricultural with a working farm that actually worked the farm. And then less than 5% or around 5% was single-family residences that did not have any association with farming. And then you can see that in 2019, we were provided new data that really triggered the zoning regulation changes. Where we could see that land was being converted from agricultural uses to residential uses. And that conversion was making the land much more fragmented, which in return was making farming and ranching more difficult. With a past history of fragmented agriculture and natural areas, lots end up being too big to mow and maintain for a lot of people, but yet too small to continue farming. So in 2019, ag-only parcels with no residence, whereas down to about 30%, working farms were down to 18%. And then our single-family residences that were not, didn't have any relationship with farming was up to 36%. So one thing that I think it's important to show you guys is during, prior to the new zoning regulations, we really were seeing quite a few concerns about some, about how land was split in the county and how it was developed. We just talked about, you know, this fragment in numbers going up quite a lot, farming kind of steadily declining. And you can actually see that here, this dark area is our urban growth area. And then when we turn on the certificates of survey from 2006 up until 2020, that was how rural land splits happened essentially. So when a property owner wanted to take a larger piece of property and start dividing that to make multiple houses, then that went through a certificate of survey process. That certificate of survey process was done administratively. It, because every lot previously in the county was zoned agriculture. And so there was really nowhere, nothing for a property to, if a property was primarily in agricultural use, and all of a sudden that lot was going to be filled with houses and no longer have an agricultural use. There was no process in place to identify that. So we really thought that was a problem because we didn't have a true inventory of how much agricultural ground we truly have left in Douglas County. And so in the 2020 regulations, we brought about districts. Those are AG1 district is our 20 acre and higher district. You can also on the county web viewer, you can see the zoning districts. I'll turn that on. The AG1 areas, everything over 20 acres, and that's the blue area. The kind of yellow tan area is AG2. Those are 10 acre lots and smaller. And then you'll see these hashed lines and these are cluster developments. Those are tip, they're not called subdivisions, they're called cluster developments, but essentially they are subdivisions. So they are three acre lots that are clustered in an area to allow a higher density of residential growth. So Plan 2040 was adopted in 2019. That also was a primary reason for the kickoff for the new zoning regulations. We really wanted to work to take the Plan 2040 goals and implement those into a regulatory entity to make those goals actually happen. The ones that we have checkmarked are really ones that we believe that the zoning regulations have or subdivision regulations have been able to accomplish in the new regs. Though that includes adopting regulations, which requires grading permits when possible. Anytime a property is site planning, we are requiring additional possibly grading stormwater studies, those type of things now. So as development increases, we're able to ask for more information so that the properties ultimately are safer and they're more ready for that development. Where we've incorporated preservation of native prairie, that is native prairie that is voluntarily listed. We've incorporated preservation of native woodlands, which we call old growth forest, and the protection of high-quality soils, which was not something that was a part of the old zoning regulations. Thus, that kind of administrative approval when land was being divided for residential purposes. Kind of the areas that we're still working on that we're going to talk about some today are how to protect contiguous amounts of agricultural land in the rural areas so that we can ensure there will be future productive agricultural uses in the county. How do we identify suitable land to accommodate the growth in an orderly way that allows us to also preserve agricultural ground? How do we ensure the transition from a rural residential neighborhood is more compatible with the other land uses or more intensive land uses? Another thing that we did incorporate, incorporate was the preservation of sensitive lands. And we'll go through those sensitive land factors here in just a little bit. We are now maintaining agricultural-supported housing. We have quite a number of ways to accommodate agricultural-type housing or seasonal-type agricultural housing. One that we're struggling with is clustering residential development in a way that actually preserves agricultural land. Currently in the urban growth area, there, you guys will see on site plans and surveys and rezone requests, an area called a set aside, and it's 40% that's set aside. And we often call that set aside or think of that set aside as something where that land is being protected forever. But it is being protected until it annexes into the city limits. At the point that it annexes into the city limits, it can obviously become more housing, different types of housing. It could be, you know, multifamily, single-family, it could be commercial land, it could be a variety of things, it could be a city park. But we don't actually have a way to ensure that when land is put in that 40% set aside, that it would be actually protected forever. Seeking conservation of those sensitive lands in order to kind of meet the definition of the county's rural character, I believe we have incorporated with the new zoning regulations, identifying and adopting appropriate land division and zoning regulations, and that's the AG1, AG2 cluster preservation that we created. And then again, we're still striving and working towards protecting those contiguous amounts of rural land in the county. So the sensitive lands, we did already have a definition in the old zoning regulations of kind of what a sensitive land was, and they're really areas or places that are unique environmentally. And they have attributes that are worthy of retention or preservation. Two that we added at the time of the new zoning regulations was high-quality agricultural soils and native prairies that are voluntarily listed. So the dark line across the bottom of the screen, that's the very southern border of the UGA that we looked at on the web viewer just a little bit ago. So you can see how kind of far out that UGA goes to the south, southern end of the county. You know, we're going over four miles south of town. And that's, that's pretty far infrastructure-wise. When we're talking about, we want to increase density and promote growth in the UGA. Really, the problem is though, is the UGA is intended for, okay, we're allowing a higher density growth in this area because this area is going to annex into the city limits. So this is going to become city. But when you really look, look at the reality of it, you can see this is really far from the city limits. And you can see this is Haskell going south of town. So it's pretty built up. There's a lot of houses. A lot of people want to be located on paved roads. I mean, this is a quick hop onto a paved road and you're in town. So super convenient site. Totally understandable why it's been built up and why residences are increasing along those corridors. But also, if you look at as the city has a plan of where they want to annex and, you know, they're really focusing on that western, northwestern corner. This area may not annex for 100 years. So why are, why is the county, I mean, the true question is, why is the county developing in these locations? If we don't believe truly that that's going to annex anytime soon. Um, one thing I think is worth noting, we're going to kind of zoom into that area that I had circled there that was kind of south of town. Prior, in this, a certificate of survey came in on this property. It was administratively approved in 2018. And currently you can see that prior to those regulations, the land use is kind of a mix of some kind of spread out rural residential. And it's also primarily agriculture. And this is actually the land now. So there were four certificates of survey that were put together. So several certificates of survey that came in kind of at the same time. And they were all put together to create this large 22-lot cluster development or subdivision south of town. Our process now would have, under the new regulations, required a rezone. So this essentially was taking agricultural ground out of agricultural production and into just single-family residences, residences without that agricultural component. So it would have required a rezone to the CP cluster preservation district. That rezone process, it includes staff review, public notice to the neighbors within a half mile and a meeting, a public meeting in front of the planning commission, and then ultimately in front of you guys, the board accounting commission. If we would have looked at those steps, if we would have had the new regulations in place on this previously, you can see the green area is prime farm soils. Primes farm soils are really, they've been identified by the conservation district as really the best soils in the nation for farming. They're, they're comprised of really class one and class two soils. And those have the most ideal combination of physical and chemical characteristics for producing food of some sort. And in the tanned area, that is farmland of statewide importance. So the US, the conservation district has said, this soil is also important to the state of Kansas and vital to maintain our food system in the state of Kansas. And so you see, you know, most of this area makes up really important soils. At the top, top northwest corner, you can see there's floodplain. And then the kind of hashed blue areas are wetland areas. So those are all sensitive lands that we would have considered in a rezone request. Or we would if an application came to you today, those would be things that we would be looking at. One more example, because I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but I think it's important to kind of provide the visual so that there, you know, there's understanding of kind of the land divisions in the county. So this is a parcel outside of the urban growth area. And outside of the urban growth area, prior to the new regulations, you had to start with a 20-acre lot, but you could divide that 20-acre lot one time. So you could have two 10-acre lots or a five and a 15. And then you could also get a bonus lot if you were at the intersection of two local roads. So we had a lot of bonus lots where folks intersected at two local roads, and then they were able to get three lots instead of two. This is an example of a property owner who did several rural certificates of survey and divided up a lot of, you know, previously farmland. And these lots are now mostly suburban-style, small-scale residential lots. And if we would have had the new rezone requirements were in effect under that, those certificates of survey, we would have been looking at these kind of sensitive land areas. So prime farm soil, green area, statewide importance soils are in the yellow tan area, and then there's some floodplain and wetlands. This, in 2018, we really didn't know it until 2019. We started seeing data in, and planning started recognizing the number of these surveys and land splits that were going on that I just showed you in those visuals. And the number had really just, we were averaging around 20 a year rural land splits. Now that's not 20 buildable lots. Oftentimes on one survey, you are getting multiple buildable lots. So if there are 20 rural surveys coming in, that may mean there are 40 or 50 additional buildable lots. And so we were averaging around 20 of those surveys coming in to review, staff to look at, and those to be administratively approved. Are the cluster developments, which were the ones that are only allowed in the urban growth area, those numbers were, you know, staying around less than five or so. But then in 2018, we all of a sudden had this huge jump to 60 of those surveys. And then even our cluster developments had gone up some too. They were right around 10, I think. And so when we saw that, we decided because of the comprehensive plan changes, because the zoning regulations really didn't have a way to deal with that type of growth, it was time to look at the zoning regulations and get them incorporated. Because we had been looking at them long before me, Mary Miller had been working on them. But it was time to really sit down and work really hard on them. And so we put a moratorium in place, which essentially stopped all of those rural certificates of survey. It completely eliminated, eliminated them for most of 2019. So you can see that number dropped back down in 2019 because there was a moratorium in place. So I think what is the most interesting part is the new zoning regulations. We now are outside of the urban growth area requiring what's called, if you want to do a land split and it's 20 acres or greater, you can do an ag subdivision boundary survey. And as you can see, that number is pretty high. I mean, we processed about 30 of them last year. And on those 30, again, there are multiple 20-acre lots often. And so while we thought that the zoning regulations, the new incorporation of a 20-acre requirement would really slow down development, we've realized it has not slowed down development. It has just changed the way development is happening. So before where you were seeing 10-acre lots or some five acres and 10-acre lots being subdivided, now we're just seeing a larger number of 20-acre lots being divided through the ag sub survey. So just to kind of break that down, depending on what you're zoned, if you're zoned AG1, which is our primary agricultural zoning district, we allow one dwelling every 20 acres. If you are zoned AG2, which means you're 10 acres or less, oh, I'm sorry, you're really, you're between 10 and 20 acres, then you're allowed just the one dwelling every 10 acres. And then cluster preservation, that requires that you start with a 20. It can only be done in the urban growth area. But you can actually go down to one dwelling every three acres. So the rezone factors that we have incorporated into the zoning regulations. So if you're going from an AG1 zoning district to an AG2 or a cluster preservation district, staff looks at all of these factors for a rezone, and they're the golden factors that a lot of people are familiar with in the planning world. We had added two components to our rezone factor. And that includes the suitability of the property for agricultural uses and the impact of environmentally sensitive lands. Mary, I'm going to let you take over on land evaluations.
Okay, well, with the impact and the emphasis on protecting agricultural land, we wanted to develop a system that would allow us to do that. Since it's not something planners or even Tanya can go out and just look at land and say, yes, this is good agricultural land. So we wanted to develop a tool that we can use with every property and enter the information and you'll get back the answer. It's not subjective. So we are in the process of developing what's called a LESA system. It's a land evaluation and site assessment. And these have to be tailored for every time they're used. You tailor them for what, what factors you're trying to protect. And also you want to take into consideration where you're at, you know, what, what kind of agricultural land do you have in your area? So I'm going to kind of explain where we are right now. I've mentioned that in some zoning staff reports, his presentations that we're working on it. And this will kind of give you an idea of where we are. And we hope to be finished within maybe two months and be able to come back and bring things for you to look at. We look at several factors. We have some that are related to soil. We look at the soil capability classes and they go from one through eight. And in the comprehensive plan, they talk about high-quality soils and they define those as class one and two. Those are kind of the premier soil types. And so when we look in our evaluation system, these get a ranking, how much class one and two soil is on a property, you get points for that. We look at the farmland classification. Tanya went through that. If you're prime farmland or statewide importance, there's a classification, not prime farmland, and we're assigning rankings for those. So the property gets points for how much of that is on the site. And then productivity, this is what we're working on right now. They have, the NRCS is really helping us with this. We're using the soil survey from the Department of Agriculture. And they helped us with the National Commodity Crop Productivity Index. And you can pull that up. It'll tell you where it ranks, where this property ranks, and it'll divide it by soil type, how it ranks in productivity, and that scale is from zero to one. And one of the things we want to work with some agricultural experts on is, in Douglas County, what is considered really good is point seven and up really good. You know, mathematically, I would think of point five as being average. But as far as Douglas County, that may not be average. So we want to be able to find out exactly how to rank this so it fits our agricultural land. And then the range productivity index, this is a little bit more challenging because it just provides us with the tons per acre per year on different portions of the property based on their soil type. And we need to speak with an agricultural expert there to decide how much productivity per acre per year is really good for northeast Kansas, you know? So we're able to rank them as really high quality, medium quality, maybe less important. So these are the ones we're working on right now is those productivity factors. We look at other things that aren't related to soil. We look at natural constraints. For instance, if the property contains a lot of wetland or has stream corridors, woodland, things that would prevent agriculture, you know, it's not good agricultural land if you have a forest. And so you get negative points if you have these, depending upon how much of the site contains that. And I'm going to show you an example of a, of that evaluation, where you can see how that's taken into account. We look at the topography. If you have really steep slopes, that would be considered not really the best agricultural land. So if you're 15, the slope is 15% or more, that is considered. And that's where we would draw the line. So, and we also just look at topography. I'm sorry I said that. And then we look at the location. Is it in tier two? Is it in tier three? Or is it outside the UGA? And these all get different rankings. And as we're looking at the UGA, this may be a tool, we could, a ranking, we could kind of calibrate. If we didn't want any land development tier three, that could be ranked as very important for agricultural protection. You know, and then the only lands in tier three that would qualify for development would be those that just really didn't rank high on any of the other factors. So we could cut, you know, kind of change this one factor to accommodate maybe limiting development or rezonings in the UGA. Outside the UGA, that has the highest protection factor right now. And then we look at the current land use, you know, if the property is already being used for residential, or if it's being used as some other use, then it may not be feasible to change that to agricultural. So these are the things we look at whenever we do an evaluation. And this is just a volunteer property that we're looking at. You get to look at the soil. So the soil survey will provide us with the soil type. And we don't have any rankings for this. It's just general information. And then we look at the soil capability class. That's what I mentioned goes from one through eight. So on this property, they're color-coded and you can see that the highest ranking is that tan area. It's two that would qualify in our cop plan as a high-quality agricultural soil. that would qualify in our cop plan as a high quality agricultural soil. The yellow area is a class three, that's still pretty good. Soil, it just doesn't qualify as, um, high quality. So these all get individual rankings. And I'll show you the spreadsheet that we use. Uh, zoning and code staff prepared a spreadsheet that's really super handy that we can plug these figures into. And someday this will be done automatically. Our GAS department will set it up and hopefully it'll just automatically help, you know, calculate these things. Farm land classification. So from the soil map, they'll provide us what is prime farmland. It's that green area. And in this case, that corresponds pretty closely with the class two soils, but not always. Uh, we have the statewide importance is shown in blue and then not prime farmland is shown in red. And as we go along, you'll see that there's some site constraints explaining possibly why these areas are not prime farmland. Uh, the commodity crop index that I mentioned, we have one area and that's in that southwest corner again, that has a point three ranking, which would be what we would consider probably below average. And then the rest is green, which is basically, it appears based on the numerical factor that that would be average. And so we want to consult and just make sure that's how we should be viewing that, or should we be reviewing? Point five is really pretty good and we'll get that figured out shortly. And then we have the rain plan productivity. So even though we've included this, we're not actually ever including it in our evaluations yet because we just don't have any idea what to assign to these ratings. Um, under soil type, next to it, you'll see the rating, that's how many tons per acre per year is grown in those areas. And so, um, we're talking with the department, K-State University and hoping to get someone to just give us a general guidance of what would, what should be considered as really good or medium. And so then we'll add that and put those rankings in. So the non-soil factors on this property, there is a wetland. The zoning regulations require us to protect jurisdictional wetlands. We get this wetland information from the Fish and Wildlife Wetland Mapper. If they're not connected to a water source, usually they're non-jurisdictional. We include all the wetlands we get from that source because that's our best, the best material we have at hand. However, a property owner could always, uh, get a wetland specialist to delineate that. And if it's not jurisdictional, we wouldn't protect it. Uh, we look at the steep slopes, as I mentioned, um, on the top right corner, there's the orange. That's, uh, from the city planning JIS map, and those are slopes that are greater than fifteen percent. And then we can just look at the contours. And we can see what is the topography of the site. And so this site is for the most part relatively level. And this is a spreadsheet that we use. There are a few other factors that we look in, um, that I didn't mention in the graphics, current land use we would look at. And, um, in the bottom right corner down, you'll see it's, uh, NCPI farmland important slope. And below that, we look at the UGA. And so if you're outside UGA, we rank you as ten for protection. In tier three, we rank you as six. And in tier two, we rank you as one because that's expected annex is probably less important to protect farmland in tier two. So, um, another thing we could do, we could change those rankings i- if we wanted to limit development more, so that it, that would just be an extra level of protection. It wouldn't prevent all development, but it would add to the protection. Or we could include a proximity to Lawrence City limits factor. So let's say the properties are within a quarter mile or within a half mile of city limits. Maybe we would relax the protection measures. And that way tier three, which is really a very broad tier would be subdivided just through the LISA system. So these are some options we're looking at and, uh, we'll probably work through these on a couple of examples, see how they would work. So on this property, the grand total came up to forty-five, which is a medium rating. Um, it probably would have ranked higher. It's just that we used a crop production index and so we don't have our range information finalized yet, and this is all grassland. And there's probably a reason why it's grassland. It's probably much better for grass production. So the assumption is that this probably would have ranked medium high or perhaps even high. But this is what we use when we're trying to look through with the LISA system, when we want to make a recommendation as to should this property be protected for agricultural uses? That's, those are the factors we look at. And, um, possible code changes, if we do decide to make changes to, uh, limit growth in the UGA. Um, it could be revisions to the zoning regulations, as I mentioned, that perhaps properties that rank high on the LISA. Let's say if they rank medium high or high, maybe we should say they definitely should not be rezoned unless it's serving a public good. You know, maybe there's a utility that needs to go in that location and that's the only place it could be. Um, it could be some revisions to the subdivision regulations. Uh, we could prevent rezoning and land divisions in tier three, for instance. Uh, the city of Udora recently adopted an urban growth area. And they only have, uh, they have a tier one that's in the city limits. They have a tier two where they expect to annex, and then they have something called the urban reserve with, they expect the urban growth area to grow into. And their tier two, um, they don't want any land divisions except things that could be exceptions to the subdivision regulations. So our subregs will be revised to note that, that in that tier, they would rather it come into the city in larger lots. And so they don't have the small divided lots to deal with. And so, um, some of these changes may require a revision of the comprehensive plan. Uh, we'd rather keep those changes as small as possible, but, um, those are just kind of the places we could be going as we look at what we could do to address this. And I think we're back to Tanya.
So this is just a map of the urban growth area. And, um, currently you can see that under Plan Twenty Forty in two thousand and nineteen, they changed that to a tiered system. Tier one is the city limits, which is the blue area. Tier two is the, is, um, just outside of the city limits, the green area, and then that tan area is our tier three.
I was, I think we said I was supposed to do this, so I shouldn't have switched back to you yet. So, um, before, uh, Plan Twenty Forty was adopted, um, Horizon Twenty Twenty divided the UGA into service areas. Service area one was very strictly limited. You could not divide land in service area one. You could not get permits for septic systems. If you wanted to develop, you had to annex. Then we had several other service areas. But the distinctions between them were just very vague. And so they were basically all treated the same. And so that's why when you look to the urban growth area, you'll see a lot of development. Plating was allowed in the urban growth area. It was not supposed to happen outside the UGA, but it did. You'll look at the old, all our, um, JIS maps, you'll see there are quite a few platted rural subdivisions outside the UGA. But it was supposed to be concentrated in UGA. Horizon Twenty Twenty kind of said direct residential development to the UGA. Keep outside UGA more agricultural. And with Plan Twenty Forty, agricultural protection is being extended throughout the rural county. So it's going to be in the UGA as well. Tier two is a kind of similar to service area one. It's a little less restrictive. It's intended to annex prior to development, but you can get septic system permits there. And if the city's not able to extend services, some development is possible. So it's a little bit less strict than service area one. And then tier three is, uh, it's a grouping that would have been two through four, and it's, uh, you're not required to annex. It, um, we did remove a portion of grant township from that. And, uh, it's just, the land would require a lot of utilities and infrastructure extensions. Some of tier three will probably annex within the life of the comprehensive plan, just due to its proximity to the city. It's not expected to, based on what we have right now, but if developers came in and paid for the extension of sewer lines, then parts of the urban growth area in tier three would probably develop an annex. But as I mentioned, one of the biggest changes is now Plan Twenty Forty is really recommending we protect agricultural land, whether it's in UGA or outside. And then this will go to Chad.
Hello, everybody. I'm Chad Boyd, Director of Public Works. Uh, if I could get screen sharing, um, I've got a couple of things I want to show. And what I want to do is just kind of give a little bit of, uh, perspective from the infrastructure side of things. And, um, there are two basic, uh, views to discuss here. The first is when, when a development occurs out in the rural area, you know, what are the impacts on our ability to manage our infrastructure in the rural area? And then if a development is closer into the city, what are the impacts on future planning of infrastructure? Um, and there are, there are two very different kind of discussions and I'm, I'm hoping to touch quickly on both of those. I'll get my screen shared here. All right. Can you see that same photo again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Nope, not yet. There we go.
There you go. So first of all, when, when we're talking about out in the county, uh, rural area, when a development occurs, a lot of times, most times, those are on township roads. We have a, a system, of course, of township management of roads. Most of our local roads are township roads. This particular road in the photo is, uh, Chip Seal Road, which means it's hard surfaced. Um, and that is a quick indication that it's in Walker Russa Township. A lot of their roads are hard surfaced. Uh, this road is, uh, just south of town, about two miles. It's in UGA. And what you're looking at here is a photo of a culvert that was built in nineteen thirty-two. And, uh, I'll be coming to you soon with a request to go out for bids on this, uh, to replace this culvert. So after eighty-nine years, we're, we're gonna pull it out and put a new culvert in. Um, there are a few reasons for that. It's a narrow culvert. The roadway is very narrow. The guardrails are substandard. The road sides are a little bit higher risk than we like to see. And then worst of all, this is a picture of it in twenty nineteen. And this is something that I've seen multiple times in five years. So, um, this, this location floods pretty readily. There was a certificate survey that was done just down the road in this view off to the right for, I think, six additional lots. And so where we had, you know, forty or fifty rural residential properties passing through this area, now we suddenly have a, an immediate increase of ten percent uh, based on a certificate of survey going through there. So, um, there are other things about county infrastructure that, you know, we need to be thinking about. So if we were to replace that culvert, there's, there's the kind of scope of the replacement project and it's expensive. Obviously, um, it's a big project. It's very disruptive. And obviously we have a limited ability to do projects like that. I'm, I'm flipping quickly here to our current priority map of capital improvement projects. And I'll be coming to you in a month or two with uh, kind of an overview of the county's capital improvement plan and how we prioritize projects. I'm zoomed in here on the south side of Lawrence and you can see the yellow circles are all projects that we have prioritized or identified. And the bridge that we just saw a photo of is, is right here, if you can see my cursor wiggling there. Um, we're also going to replace a bridge just south of there, but, but obviously if development happens, then this map has to adjust to that. And with, you know, a limited, uh, funding source and a long list of things to do, there are concerns always when we put more residents in harm's way or increase the need, um, for these pieces of our infrastructure to perform and provide services. Um, so I think with, let me flip back to this. So, um, you know, looking at one more quick image of, uh, this would be another township where it's gravel road, which is really most of our township roads. And you, you can see that, you know, if you're thinking in terms of living in the city and moving into a new development versus moving into a new development that's located on this road, there is a potential for expectations to not be realized when, when home buyers arrive. And, uh, we have a lot of cases where after they're there a while, they start complaining about the conditions of roadways. And, you know, this is a roadway that was created in the late eighteen hundreds and hasn't changed significantly since then. So, um, it puts a burden on the township and the county to respond to those complaints or to increase services for those properties. And, you know, the question, of course, is do the additional property taxes in turn support that additional level of service? And it's pretty easy to see that they do not on a countywide scale, um, with the long list of projects that we have to do. So with, with that, and, and we'll probably talk about that many times, uh, in the future. That's kind of the same conversation that comes up every time there's a proposed development in the rural area. So with that, let me turn to the other perspective and, and this is what, um, we were kind of alluding to earlier in the pre- uh, presentation. So within the city or near the city, when we have these developments that happen outside the city limits, um, but in close proximity, um, you know, what are the impacts to how we can then plan the city as it grows? And what we're looking at here is a photo, it's an aerial photo from nineteen seventy-six of East Twenty Third Street and Anderson Acres is right, right there. That's called Anderson Acres. And down here, you can see that in nineteen seventy-six, there was some uh, urban residential development happening. You can see the si- the difference in size of the, the spacing of the housing and the number of houses per acre. And this-
Ted, can you help me? Sorry, I don't want to interrupt. Can you help a little bit with Anderson Acres and what, like, wha- what are your cross streets there, just in case
Sure.
folks don't have familiarity with that. Sorry.
Yep. Um, so if you go out East Twenty Third Street, where Orshawn, the tractor places, those are all on this corridor right here. Um, this would be Harper Street today, coming north, south, right here. And this is where it transitioned to the divided highway. K-ten was just built in those days. Um, and so at the time, you can probably imagine that, you know, the, the highway had been built and it's, hey, we can put houses right here and they have great access to everything. And it probably made a lot of sense. The thing though, that of course is when the city developed further, that is what we still have today, that, that configuration of lots. And it wasn't a, a case where the urban area was able to, uh, take what was there and work with it. Instead, the urban area just went around it. And when you look in particular at this location and, and some of the value of that real estate along that retail frontage and what that, what the implications of that are. And when you look at the infrastructure in terms of transportation planning, road network, you look at the fact that Prairie Park School is, is right down here and all of these kids can walk to school safely. And the kids in there can walk to school safely, but if it had been developed to a higher density, there'd be a lot more kids walking to school from that area. Um, so there are a lot of different ramifications to having that sort of inserted into the, the continued planning of an urban area. And just as a point of reference, because we're talking today about these cluster developments with three acre lots, if that had meant three acre lots, this is what it would look like in, in scale. So, you know, if we were to see one of these close to the city, it would be hard to, um, go back and say, well, let's tear all those houses down and replan this. And it's likely not going to happen. I'm going to move to another location. So this is Fifteenth Street, Bob Billings Parkway on the south. Um, this is Monterey Way on the east side here. And this whole development right here is Western Hills Suburban Ranchettes or Rancheros. Uh, this is done back in the seventies and eighties also. And the interesting thing about this development is that it got annexed into the city and um, all of the lateral fields failed over the twenty or thirty years after it was annexed. And so back in the, around two thousand, the city had to go in and put sanitary sewers in the entire neighborhood, which meant ripping out all of the mature trees and the landscaping and the backyards and the fences and uh, sheds and everything that was in the way and tearing it all up and, and doing a very expensive improvement. And even after that, the, the streets are still, uh, rural roads with ditches. So, um, and again, you can see the relative lot sizes. And when you think about, you know, this, uh, it'd be a principal arterial here on the south side. If the city wants to do a repaving project of that or an improvement, you have to look at kind of the service area in terms of how many people it serves to look at cost benefit of that project. And when you have lots that are this big, then the benefits start dropping. And, and so the cost benefit ratio goes up. And so that's, that's an impact long-term to the city. And there, if it was three acre lots, you can see that the impact would be even more dramatic. So again, having a three acre certificate of survey that gets absorbed into the city can be very expensive long-term. Here's an area, this is, uh, Miller and Wells Acres. I'll show you in a minute a, a different view where you can see where it is. But I've been out there several times over the last twenty or thirty years. This house right here has drainage channels around its entire perimeter. The, the whole drainage system comes down to this T intersection, and then they had to split it around the house to, to try to get water from flowing right through the living room. And then there's a channel on the backside of the lot that's the primary receiving stream. And in a large rainstorm, this whole intersection's underwater and the house is surrounded like a lake. And this is a township road and still is. And, uh, there's very little that they can do about it and they've asked many times for help. Um, it would be a major capital improvement on the order of two or three million dollars to make the flooding situation improved for this neighborhood. And that's obviously a very, very high cost to benefit ratio for the community. Here's where that is. I'll, I'll show the location of that house. It's right here. And the runoff that feeds that flooding problem is the industrial area and all of North Iowa Street creeping through and running down through this neighborhood in a system of open ditches and then right past that house on both sides. And this was never annexed into the city. So it's the township's responsibility. And we, the county, are involved often in administering, uh, issues in this area. Uh, the city also had to annex a few of these when their lateral fields- Uh, the city also had to annex a few of these when their lateral fields failed, and they provided sewer service to them, and annexation was required to provide service. Again, a very expensive project to provide sanitary sewer if we're gonna do it for all of them. So those are kind of existing examples. And what I wanted to do here, I think it's kind of neat, is um do hypothetical. So this is in nineteen ninety-five, um and that is Highway Forty or West Sixth Street on the north side. And it's an aerial view in nineteen ninety-five of rural areas. And this would have been, you know, three miles out of town at the time. And if you you had allowed, if we had allowed three-acre uh lots to develop uh at that time, and it looks like kind of a reasonable concept, and it could have easily been done, then over the next twenty-five years, the city would have grown around them. And this is the actual city underneath there. And that's what you would have wound up with. And we would have had issues with connecting streets. We would have had kind of a hole in terms of the sanitary sewer system, the electric system, the water system. Um, and then this is Langston Hughes Elementary. And again, instead of you know, a hundred houses with kids able to walk to school fairly quickly, this is uh seventeen houses that have access to that. And the connectivity of streets obviously is an issue. The fact that we did not do that and instead did this shows, you know, how much better things worked. We have a recreational trail in a green belt that goes around this area. Sanitary sewers used that valley as their corridor. We've obviously got a street network that is very good at managing traffic speeds and uh is safe for kids to walk to school. Um, it's safe for emergency vehicles to access. There's plenty of parking. Uh, we've got a water system that's got good pressure. We've got electric lines that are pretty reliable. Um, we've got storm drainage that is not a problem. We haven't got any flood issues that I know of out in those areas. And so just the ability to step back and plan that with a a blank slate was was a really good thing to have at the time. So that's kind of the end of what uh what I had in mind in terms of giving sort of background information on infrastructure and how this relates to this discussion of planning. So I think I'll I'll hand it back off and take any questions if you have them.
We threw, I so I know we just threw a lot at you all, and I appreciate that uh you all may have some questions. So I I just if the commission wants to start with their questions, and obviously, we can, we have, just for everyone's knowledge, we could probably go a little bit past five, um but we do have a five-thirty business meeting. So just want to keep an eye on the time. So, thank you.
Thank you all for these presentations. Um, this is Shannon Portio. I really appreciated them. I also really liked the hypothetical. I could see my house in that one, which was, you know, an extra special touch, but that really helped to visualize everything. I don't think I have any questions at this time, but I appreciate all of the information.
I have a question. I appreciate the presentation. I I have a question about area plans and how that figures in in some of the the cluster developments that we've seen recently. The area plan seemed to indicate that it would be appropriate for residential development. But um, our our new zoning process sort of is in conflict with that. Um, do Jeff, do you have any updates on those area plans and and am I missing something in the conflict of those?
Commissioner, I don't believe you are missing the issue there. There is a conflict between them. The the plans that we have and and just uh kind of if I may take a moment to talk about them in a little bit broader sense there. There's twelve of them in total, and there are seven that are more or less inside the city of Lawrence, and then there are five that are more more in the county. They have some overlap into some city limits and things, but there's really the five in the county that we would be looking at there. There needs to be an adjustment between those. They were all written under Horizon Twenty-Twenty and had a look at it from that standpoint and things with Plan Twenty-Forty. We're gonna need to take a look at those and see which ones I would hazard almost all of them are gonna need a bit of a revision, a little bit of a look at them at those things. The Planning Commission at their work session, uh actually, I believe it'd be November of nineteen now, um, been quite a year. Um, started to look at kind of prioritizing what that would be, and a lot of those initial things we kind of prioritized. And I think they surprised themselves a little bit when they were doing this was actually working on implementation items for Plan Twenty-Forty. So the Lisa system, sensitive land protection, so those those bigger, broader stroke items, if you will. Um, so at the moment, right now, the sector plans are not scheduled to be updated within by twenty-twenty-two. We're looking at the earliest would be twenty-twenty-three, I suspect, before we'd be able to really kind of get into the sector plans and have a good stern look at what's going on.
So I mean, that really presents a challenge for both the Planning Commission and us, because we have a set of zoning tools that Tony is and her team have put together, well, all the planning department. I'll just tell you, but you know, has put that together. A- and it it really becomes a pinch point for the Planning Commission, and then that drags into our meetings. Is there I I know you gave us three sort of tools that, you know, we might want to consider. Wha- what do you think would help address that? I mean, I just don't know how to deal with that. I mean, I I have some ideas on how to deal with that, but I don't want to end up in court every time somebody brings something to us because they're gonna point to the area plan and say, this, I was just following what the area plan says. So I mean, what do you, what do you suggest until I I had to pause for a second when you said twenty-twenty-three. What do you suggest we do until twenty-twenty-three?
Yeah, I, in my opinion, I think a look at subdivision regulations and zoning are are appropriate, because those are the tools that really can bring the overarching goals of Plan Twenty-Forty and kind of bring them into reality. The sector plans and the neighborhood plans, and they go by the 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 long name of the specific land use plan, kind of encapsulate everybody. Um, they are incorporated by reference into Plan Twenty-Forty, but there is some, you know, just natural, because of timing and the scope of that item there. They don't necessarily fit under Plan Twenty-Forty as well as they did under Horizon Twenty-Twenty. So staff usually leans on the goals and action items of Plan Twenty-Forty to be the guidance, because that was the the mission and the vision, the community's preference for those items. So we lean back into the comprehensive plan a little bit more to kind of give us that that guidance about what the community is expecting in the next twenty years. So we do recognize that we gotta get caught up on on those plans, and we gotta get some work done on it. Um, but they do take some time and, you know, as we were kind of looking back at some of those plans, I'm sorry, probably the lights turned off on me there. Um, I'm not sure what happened, but uh we were looking back at the dates on those plans, and most of them were done during two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and we had a revision. So we had a a lot of time for staff to kind of go through. That's how we got so many of them done. Um, in recent times, we haven't had that same, that same capacity that we would have had back then, but it is something I've been watching for. I know the Planning Commission has spoken many times about interest in updating west of K-ten plan, which would be effectively between uh Highway Forty-Sixth Street down to Clinton Lake and the K-ten and Farmers Turnpike Plan, which sits just to the the north of it there, and it runs east back towards the city limit line. Those, the Planning Commission have identified multiple times as being the ones that really need to have a a look first, really, to kind of get them sorted out. So I I think we all recognize that they need updating. It's just uh trying to get them squeezed into the schedules and the capacity has been a little tricky at the moment.
So I guess I just want to clarify on that, Jeff, just for folks. So, you know, while while those are sort of gonna be delayed, and and hopefully, we can have some conversations about if that's if there's any movement there. In the meantime, you you think that a subdivision regulation changes and perhaps then that might necessitate in a text amendment to the comp plan, to the Comprehensive Plan Twenty-Forty could help, you know, as outlined in this work session, could help address some of these issues?
I do. Okay. I I I think it's uh a comprehensive plan amendment or a text amendment to the zoning and or the subdivision regulations could help get a little bit more synchron- synced up with what we're wanting, the expectation of the comprehensive plan into the codes. So I mean, that that to me is one of those items, because really what you want to do with a comprehensive plan is, once you have it, is to start bringing kind of its action items and its goals and bring them more into reality. So kind of putting them into codes and bringing that into practice. So that would at the moment, that would be what I would say is a is a good option to take.
And I I'm not gonna try to, I know other commissioners may have questions, so I I'm trying to not necessarily uh horn in on your time, but how long do you think that process would take, Jeff? You know, if we were, if the commission were to come in in a a public session and ask like, this is the direction we want to move, what is your estimated event horizon for both that regulation change and a comprehensive amend text amendment?
Uh, comprehensive plan amendments can take a little bit of time. Um, they do have a bit of span in there. A text amendment like this to make sure we get everything right and that we have the the items that the commission is seeking in guidance, I would anticipate at best probably six months would be my my guess at the moment. Um, it depends on scope and scale in in many ways and and the details to it, but I would you know, a a good text amendment is at as fast as probably about a six-month process.
That was actually uh my question, Sarah. So thank you for that. Um, Commissioner Reed here, I thank you for all of that. That was, I appreciate the visuals especially. Um, I also could, you zeroed in on my neighborhood and then one of my relatives' neighborhoods. So I live over in Prairie Park neighborhood and um that little, um, what did you say the name of the neighborhood was? Um?
Anderson Acres.
Anderson Acres, which I I don't see any signage for anymore, but it took me a a minute when I lived over here to figure out how exactly you got into those streets. So that's some interesting history to hear. Um, so I think I, you asked my question more or less, Sarah, and just wondered um mostly about the process for, you know, after this work session, what to expect um in terms of um, eh, Mary, I think you mentioned maybe two or or three more months that you were working on. Um, some some further details specifically around consulting um farmland, um, um, sorry, ag producers about that scale, the class scale of classes, the one to eight. So I guess, I mean, a timeline, it sounds like around six months. Um, depending on scope, you said, for text amendment, but what's kind of the next step in the process? Would you all come back with formal recommendations about uh exactly what those amendments would look like? Um, or do we expect another work session? Just curious about that.
Well, I mean, I would say, and 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 obviously Jeff and Mary and Tanya can chime in here if I am out of, if I'm speak out of turn, but we could bring back a recommendation for the commission that outlines how to start that, um, the subdivision regulation update process and the key points that you want in there, and then how that would relate to the text amendment. I think some of the additional work in terms of the Lisa system and how that work could could happen at a parallel track. Somebody tell me if they think it could, so that we could begin to use both of those pieces. Um, eh, cause I do think that evaluation of that, you know, can we, you know, let's make sure we're preserving the best land, you know, let's make sure that we're preserving. You know, if it's not so great, like, houses sound awesome, you know, I I think it, you know, I think those are some of the considerations that need to be taken into account there. But at the same time, you know, um, these rules and regulations allow this to continue to happen and until we change the regulations to change that. So Jeff or Tanya, do you have anything to add in terms of what we could bring back to the commission in terms of recommendations?
I think that that captures quite a bit of it, truthfully. And under the code, the county commission can initiate a text amendment. We can get that process uh off and going. You know, and one thing I think just fair to mention is, when we were doing Plan Twenty-Forty, one of the things that I remember hearing a lot about, and it stuck with me this whole time, was people no matter where we were at in the county, and and we're from from the north to the south, all the way through the county, was everybody wanted to have rural recreation and opportunities to reach nature and to reach agriculture and see food production and those kind of items out there. Um, and with agriculture being probably the one of the biggest economic engines in the county, everybody recognized how important that was to the community as a whole. So it it, we saw a lot of that in Plan Twenty-Forty. So the action items, the goal we put in there, we're trying to to go in that route. I think you know, we're at the point of maybe just looking at the codes and making sure that we're getting that community vision and expectation from the plan and getting that synced up to our codes to get that into reality a little better.
That helps. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Jeff, I'm really glad to hear you say that, because that, those are the thoughts that are running through my, we didn't really talk about our open space plan yet. So I think that's where that falls. You know, how do we how do we create policy and practice that supports Plan Twenty-Forty? And, you know, I I I think what I want to make a case for is we can't forget the county in in developing those policies and practices when we're prioritizing those things. You know, Plan Twenty-Forty is so specific in its language about tier one and tier two and tier three. And my concern is, is that that specificity is putting undue pressure. And I think what Tanya showed us in those charts, we're seeing that happen already. I- i- it's putting undue pressure on the unincorporated areas, and we don't have the tools yet to respond to that. And and it, and so I guess that's, I'm just sort of making a case like if we can get going, I I mean, I know you said we can start a text amendment. If we can get going on that, otherwise, I feel like we're gonna have a lot of conflict as 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 folks out in the county understandably trying to make the most out of their properties, create you know, cluster developments, bring it to us, and 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 we can only give the excuse like we haven't got to that for so long. And I and I know there's a ton of work, and I know we're on a pandemic, but anything we can do to speed that up, and if it's a text amendment and it takes six months, and you think that'll really help us out, that that's the direction I'd like to see this go.
And one option that is slightly extreme, but we've done it before, is to place a moratorium on cluster developments until we have the regulations in place. Um, we 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 didn't do it, you know, specifically on cluster developments. We did it on surveys out in the county um because we saw the numbers of land splits at such a high level. That was something that we could not grasp or um have any control over. And so we put the moratorium on. It was temporary. Um, just while we worked on the regs and provided um so that we could have the time um to really get out there, speak with the public about it, and, you know, create a set of regulations that the public wanted as well. Um, I I I mean, an option is always a temporary moratorium as well.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, Tanya, because I do think as if we bring things back before the commission, county commission for discussion, you know, there probably are gonna be some key points here that we're still gonna need some more feedback on, and and a moratorium is one of them. Um, you know, I think sometimes my concern is that, you know, when we put a moratorium in place on the certificates of survey, because that was administratively approved, we, I think there was a strong concern on the part of staff that we would have a land rush. You know, everybody would try in this six-month period to get their certificate of survey in um before the regulations change. Now, Tanya and Jeff, I'd be curious as to your thoughts here, you know, with already having a rezone process in place and having to go through Planning Commission and the County Commission, you know, that process already has some built-in speed to it or lack thereof. Um, do you feel like it's important to to have this in place to just sort of send that message that we don't want anyone to enter into this process and possibly get denied because it, at a commission level, you're looking at you know, making sure that all of our regulations are in sync. And right now, what you hear is that they're not. Uh, Tanya and Jeff, I guess I'd be curious as to your thoughts on that.
Planning Commission calendars are usually what we call about a sixty-day calendar. So before, like, an application to when it goes to the board is is usually about sixty days, and then um, depending upon the month of the time of the year, it could it could even be another week or two afterwards, or three or four, depending upon how the the meeting schedules all just kind of fall out before it would reach to the county commission for a consideration. There, so there is some uh longevity that's already built into the calendar there, but um, you know, there are considerations about people that might might go through that process. Um, I've seen that with other counties and and other situations in a very similar light there. So it is something to be mindful of, I would say.
And Sarah, I do think the situation is a little bit different, because the certificates of survey before, we saw a huge number, and we're anticipating even a huge rush of people trying to get theirs in before the zoning regs changed. This, I don't think we're dealing with a uncontrolled amount of cluster development. And so it really
And so it really is, there may be one or two or three applications trickle in until. Um, the zoning regulation or until the subdivision and the zoning regs have been updated. Um, to incorporate the Lisa tool and those different avenues and slow kind of that growth into your three. Um, but I don't anticipate that it would be a large number.
Eh eh, thanks for that. And that's important for particularly for new commissioners that that weren't necessarily here when we did the moratorium the last time. A moratorium itself brings some of its own hassle. Um, into like who's in and who's out and what set of regulations do you use to judge them by? So. Um, you know, I think if that's we that, if that's something the commission. Would like to consider, we could bring that back before you and have a separate conversation on it. But. I just think it's important for you to know, I think Steph staff is, it's certainly a consideration. It's something we could definitely do, but I don't know that we feel as strongly. Um, that a a moratorium is needed as it was the last time around. From our perspective. And then the other thing I think that we would really want some. Additional conversation on, and I don't know that we would necessarily, we might, and I guess we might need some of it for initiating the text amendment. You know, if we're talking about, you know. What kind of residential development are we going to be okay with in certain tiers, you know? And so I think if as commissioners go back and reflect on the memo and and this conversation, like. What is, you know, what is it that we envision? Do we envision sort of this? You know, using the Lisa tool for rezoning and and but then large acres, like. Should we not go down to three acres inside tier three? You know, I think that kind of. Direction is, I think, would be helpful to Jeff and Tonya and Mary as they start that text amendment process. So. Obviously, that's something we can have individual conversations with, and we can try to isolate specifically. Uh, so staff is, you know, following the direction of the commission as we proceed. So I I guess I, if 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 there aren't more questions. I guess I would want to make sure that the com- commission had consensus for. Staff to continue to work on this and bringing recommendations back before. The commission at a future meeting, I can tell you, we will probably try to move pretty quickly. To bring it back on a regular agenda for your action. I don't know if that's Planning Commission quick. I hope it's, I hope it's a little faster than sixty days, but. Um, uh, and and you all know that we have, the Planning Commission is having their annual retreat here in a few weeks, and I'm sure. Some of this conversation will be, will come up at that conversation as well.
Yeah, I, Christian Reed here, I would just say that, um, I mean, I I trust the the expertise and the experience of, um. Of everybody that's here and presented on what has functionally worked and what has um created issues. And so. Um, yeah, I certainly am interested in in seeing what amendments you recommend and how best to resolve that so that we can have more. Continuity moving forward. It sounds like that is the goal.
Yeah, yeah. I do recognize, Jeff, that. Plan twenty forty didn't happen in a year, right? Took a little bit of time. And then once we passed Plan twenty forty, we all want results. You know, within six months. I get that. Um, and but I do, I'm glad to hear Sarah say quick, because I I do think these. These requests are going to come for before us, and we just really need some better tools. To to manage eh eh expectations from the public and. Um, you know, Sarah's right. It'd be nice to have a plan that we could say, well, this land is good for development. I know there are some people out in the unincorporated area who don't think any land is good for development. So I think we just have to be mindful of that as we move forward with those plans and and just. And also understand that that we're going to grow, you know, and that that's that's a challenge and balance those two values against each other. Um, so. I I um, I I would be supportive of of the of a text amendment, moving forward in that direction and giving us something that we can. That we can start to move forward on those tools. That'd be great.
Sounds like we have consensus then to move forward and move. Quickly, knowing that some of us will take some time, but to think through that text amendment is a first step.
I thank you, Commissioners. I I appreciate your your thoughts on this and. And please, as we continue to try to bring this back before you, you know, please feel free to reach out to. Anyone on this work session for more information. Um, and I I do want to thank this team. This was a really informative. In presentation in terms of how how this kind of. Not that planning concepts are hard to grasp some, but sometimes they are. And I think it, you guys did a great job of of making it. Uh, pretty accessible. So thank you. I think that's all we have for you, Commissioners. Yeah.
Thank you, then. We will see you back here at five thirty.